It's nine o'clock and I know that you're all anxious to get back to your jobs.[51.33][51.33](laughter) So at this time, we would like to welcome you all to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting this morning, and if you would please stand and join me in our flag salute, remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Every year, we have the privilege of handing out service awards to employees who have completed 15 years or more of service to the county of Tulare, and it's one of those great opportunities to thank our employees, to thank you who are here today for your years of service to this county. I know all of our members will have things to say, but being the chair, I get to speak first here briefly, and I know I speak for each member of this board when we say that we recognize that the effectiveness, the efficiencies, and the significance of county government is totally upon your shoulders when it comes to being the people who do the work. And so it is really a wonderful opportunity for us to say in a small way today, thank you for your years of service, and we have quite a number of you who are here today and enlisted, and at this time, I'm going to turn the program over to our Human Resources Director, Tim.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It gives me pleasure to bring before you today the employees who are to be recognized for their long years of service with the county. I'm assisted today by Judy Weens, the Human Resources Department Secretary, and Anita Spalding, an Office Assistant, and a member of our support team. The Service Awards Program recognizes employees who've completed 10 or more years of continuous service during the prior calendar year. We honor these employees for their loyalty, their hard work, and their valuable continuity and historical memory they provide the departments and the citizens of the county. Awards for employees who have completed 10 years of service are presented at the department level. So it is, as the chairman has said, beginning with the 15 years of service, and for the completion of each five years thereafter, we have additional awards, and those are presented by the board, one half of which will be today, and a similar number will be next week. Today, we're going to be presenting 67 awards. Forty of those awards are for 15 years of service, 13 are for 20 years of service, seven are for 25 years of service, five are for 30 years of service, and there are two awards for 35 years of service. Recipients, as your name is called, please come forward to receive your award. Some of the fragile awards may have boxes that you can pick up on your way back to your seat, we don't want anything to get damaged. So at this time, we're going to begin the program. Supervisor Alan Ashida, District One, will be making the presentation of awards to employees who live in his district. And we're going to begin with 15 Years of Service Awards, Mindy Balum.[292.02][292.02](applause) Mindy always has an eye on the future, whether it's watching upcoming legislation that will impact food stamp program, or how the weather may affect her flowers at home. She is always looking ahead. Her hard work on behalf of the citizens of Tulare County is truly outstanding. Congratulations.
This is something I figured I'd like to see.[321.12][321.12](laughter)[322.12][322.12](applause)
Vienna Barnes from Health and Human Services has worked for Tulare since February of 1994. Vienna is a well-organized and dedicated employee. She currently manages Tulare Works Cal-Win unit and provides Tulare Works with tremendous support. Vienna is always willing to take on new tasks and strives to improve customer service. Also 15 years, Health and Human Services Mary Casio has brought great leadership to her job and has demonstrated exemplary dedication. She has compassion and understanding for the services administered and provided by the Health and Human Services Agency, but most importantly, she has provided these services with great integrity and respect for her clients.[389.12][389.12](applause) Also 15 years of service, Lulise Lopez from the Health and Human Services Agency. She's a lifelong learner. Throughout her years with the agency, she has worked in the clinics, accounting, and now accounts receivable. During this time, she has returned to school and received her bachelor's in business administration. Lulise is patient, thoughtful, and inspiring to those around her as she continues to learn, apply, and share her knowledge.[425.02][425.02](applause) Donna Ortiz, also 15 years. She started with the county in 94 as an eligibility worker. She's worked her way up through the ranks to Division Manager for Tulare Works. Donna was instrumental in the implementation of the Cal-Win system and has a keen eye for business process improvements. She's described as dedicated, hardworking, and a go-getter.[453.02][453.02](applause) Next, from the Assessor's Office, Violet Strawn. She transferred from Cooperative Extension Department to the Assessor Clerk Recorder in August of 2006 as a Legal Document Examiner. She has since worked in the Real Property Division and was promoted to Title and Administrative Technician II in 2009. She is a walking encyclopedia and possesses a body of trivia knowledge that surpasses most at all levels of education.[493.81][493.81](laughter) (applause) Peggy Vincent from the Health and Human Services Agency, as a Budget Analyst for the Human Services Branch of HHSA. Peggy has provided invaluable guidance on a multitude of allocations and claiming issues faced by management. Peggy is like the ship's navigator of old. She keeps us on course and warns us to steer away from the storms that are constantly brewing on the horizon.[529.12][529.12](applause) Now, 20 years of service with Health and Human Services, Deborah Hernandez. She's a dedicated and conscientious, I hope she's conscious too.[546.04][546.04](laughter) Dedicated and conscientious employee who gives always 100%. She can be counted on to give the best service possible, and the department says they are truly fortunate to have her as an employee.[562.73][562.73](applause) From the Auditor, Treasurer, Tax Collector, and I'm sure there are a few other titles, for 20 years of service, Robert Macarano.[579.32][579.32](applause) Robert received his AA degree from the College of the Sequoias in December of 1974, was hired in the Auditor Controller's Office in 1989, and was promoted to a Financial Technician Next, for Supervisor Ashida's District One, 25-year recipient. This individual's name is Richard Lawson from the Health and Human Services Agency.[632.04][632.04](applause) Richard started in 1984 as a Physician's Assistant in the Inpatient Clinic at Hillman Health. He now cares for the medical needs of the adults and juveniles in the county juvenile justice facilities. His commitment and hard work are greatly appreciated, and the department wishes to honor Richard not only for his years of service, but just as importantly, for his dedication to the services he provides.[664.32][664.32](applause) Health and Human Services, 30 years of service, Office Assistant Gloria Chavez.[677.23][677.23](applause) In Gloria's 30 years of service, she has worked in various areas of Tulare County. She's dedicated, very knowledgeable, and a valuable employee at the Visalia Healthcare Center. Congratulations Gloria on your 30 years of service.[698.82][698.82](applause) Next, from District Two Supervisor Peter Vanderpoel.
My name right?[713.04][713.04](laughter)
I wasn't sure I was gonna play with it, but, okay, we're going to start now with the 15-year presentations. Kristi Barnhart, Secretary Three in Health and Human Services Agency.[728.00][728.00](applause) As the Secretary for the Director of the Human Services Branch of HHSA, Kristi has done a fine job of managing the many demands of the job. She has a natural talent for making documents look professionally done, including the recent Foster Parent Newsletter and website for the Human Services Branch. Lydia Cook is a Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant Two. She began her employment with the county as a Unit Clerk in the Tulare District Office, then moved to an Office Assistant. She's currently a Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant in the Central Scanning Unit at the Medi-Cal Food Stamp Service Center. She is described as a quiet, hard-working employee and can be relied on to complete her work accurately and efficiently, and the department says it is a pleasure having her as a part of that unit.[793.23][793.23](applause) Next, we have Kevin Scott Mikecell, Administrative Services Officer with HHSA, also 15 years. In that capacity, he is in accounting. He supervises a 13-to-15-member accounting staff that have participated in multiple audits and were given praise in regards to record-keeping in organizations. Kevin's department also has an excellent record of timely submission of invoices and time-sensitive report filings. He's described as a dedicated individual and to his profession in the county. Also 15 years of service, Self-Sufficiency Counselor Two, Julia Solis, has demonstrated excellent customer service and people skills during her employment with Tulare County. Julia has been married for 17 years to her husband, John. They have one son, Michael, who keeps them busy participating in such sports as football, baseball, and wrestling. Julia is very family-oriented and as well as a loyal employee. Next, also from HHSA, 15 years of service, Penny Souza, Social Services Worker Two. Penny has demonstrated a genuine concern and empathy for her clients. She relates well to her coworkers as well as staff throughout the Child Welfare Services Section and her service to the entire agency. She has a unique sense of humor which helps set a positive mood for the office, and that's an area I'm sure where that would be helpful. Our next Service Award recipient, 15 years of service, is retired, and so I guess you can come home again. Carol Vaughn, Health and Human Services Agency. I love this description. It says, "You could set a clock by Carol. She was always at her desk and ready for the day. She jumped in to help out and take on extra work and never complained. She was always able to get her overpavements and overissuance written up on time. She was a great asset in it and is missed." Next is Yang Song, Mental Healthcare Manager Four in the Health and Human Services Agency, 15 years of service. He provides case management services to a diverse and underserved client population in Tulare County. Many clients on his caseload are of southeastern Asian descent. Providing interpretive services for these clients is greatly appreciated. Throughout his employment with Tulare County, he has remained highly responsive to the needs of the Porterville Adult Clinic and Service Team.[1000.13][1000.13](applause) Health and Human Services Agency, now we come to our 20-year recipient, Self-Sufficiency Counselor Three, Rheta Burks is a 20-year veteran of the Tulare Works Division. She has been providing Medi-Cal eligibility in the long-term care population exclusively for over 15 years, and is one of only two counselors that manage that function. She has established a good rapport with facilities and the Porterville Development Center, and has a compassion for the individuals dependent on others to care for their needs. Rheta demonstrates the ability to interact with all involved in care decisions with respectful and a professional manner.[1054.63][1054.63](applause) I recently lost both parents, both of whom were in assisted care at the end of their lives, and I really want to tell you I appreciate the kind of work you do. It's incredible. That's a small personal note. Anyway, we'll go on. Next, also 20 years of service, Letitia Castaneda, Health and Human Services Agency.[1088.54][1088.54](applause) She began working for Child Welfare Services in August of 1987 as a Social Service Assistant. At that time, the title was Case Worker Aid in the Lindsay Office. In 1989, she became a Social Worker One Two. She left the county for a while, but returned in 1994. She was promoted to Social Worker Three, CWS in 2001, and Team Leader now. She is respected for her hard work and responsiveness to all. Susan Aldapi is a Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant with 30 years of service, and has been a great asset to all the units she has been a part of over those 30 years. She is very friendly and always willing to help any way she can. The department says they are thrilled to have her continue as part of their team.[1155.23][1155.23](applause) Next, another 30-year employee, Donna Jones, Office Assistant Two. She began her career with Tulare County at the Old County Hospital, now the Hillman Building in Tulare, and has worked in various health clinics, primarily in the Medical Records Department. In 2009, Donna was reassigned to the California Children's Services where she works today. Donna started before computers were commonplace, and now most of her time was spent on the computer. Donna, you are not alone.[1196.32][1196.32](laughter) (applause) And finally, for District Two, 35-year employee, Jeannie Warren, HHS Unit Manager Jeannie has worked for Tulare County since 1974 and currently manages the In-Home Services Program. She received the Employee of the Year Award in 2003, is dedicated, and her excellent knowledge of the program is exceptional. She will go the extra mile to serve our most vulnerable population. Next, we have District Three, Phil Cox will be making these presentations. We're going to start with Michelle Baldwin, Chief Clerk of the Board of Supervisors.[1271.13][1271.13](applause) With 15 years of service, I have one, two, three pages of material, but I'll abbreviate slightly. Michelle began her service with Tulare County in 1985 in the Probation Department. After a short break in service, she returned to the county in 1987 to work in the CAO's Office, where she remained until March of 93. In January of 1994, Michelle was hired by HHSA to act as Secretary to John Davis in the Adult Services Branch. Congratulations on escaping.[1317.13][1317.13](laughter) (applause) However, she returned to the CAO's Office in 1996, I'm sorry about that, and was appointed to her current position as Chief Clerk to the Board of Supervisors in September of 2003. Michelle is known for her outstanding work ethic and her attention to detail. Her many accomplishments include implementation of the online Board of Supervisors Agenda Management System, implementation of the online audio streaming of the Board of Supervisors meetings, launching a digitized and easily searchable online version of the Tulare County Ordinance Code, establishment of the Assessment Appeals Application Fee, and she has been married to her husband Doug for 25 years and has two daughters, Courtney and Megan. Our next recipient is Ann Bernardo, the Law Library Director.[1383.63][1383.63](applause) Ann was hired in October of 1994 as the Law Library Coordinator, and after a review in January of 1996, she was promoted and her title was changed to Law Library Director. Our next 15-year recipient is Jason Britt, Deputy Health and Human Services Director at Tulare Works. As a Deputy Director of the Tulare Works Division, Jason has been instrumental in bringing several state-of-the-art technologies that have proven to provide many efficiencies for staff and better services to county residents. The Tulare Works Service Center is a model that many other California counties would love to replicate. Also from Health and Human Services, Linda Camargo, 15 years as a Self-Sufficiency Counselor Three. She started with the county in April of 1990 as an eligibility worker and has worked with cash, medical, and the food stamp program. She is currently working in central scanning, a dedicated employee, always cheerful, and a positive attitude, and she plans to retire next month, I am told. Next, also 15 years, Peggy Carlson, Office Assistant Two, Health and Human Services. She began in 1994 as a Clerk One at the Hillman Clinic. She worked in the laboratory office for 13-plus years and has become invaluable due to her expertise in laboratory billing. A perfectionist whose work is characterized as one that can always be trusted to be accurate, she gives the front-office stability that's much appreciated. Our next recipient, 15 years of service, is also a retiree, Self-Sufficiency Supervisor, Health and Human Services Agency, Carmen Evangelista. For most of Carmen's service, she evaluated eligibility for the Tulare County Medical Services, is she here?
She's on a cruise.
She's on a cruise.[1556.54][1556.54](laughter) Well, then, I get that one.[1562.32][1562.32](laughter) Carmen was promoted to a Supervisor and monitored staff's evaluation of intake and continued eligibility for the TCMS and General Assistance Programs. I'm sorry, the last we heard she was gonna be here, so, all right. Next, Christopher Glidden, Analyst Staff Services, Health and Human Services Agency, 15 years. He started at the Tulare Works as an eligibility worker. Now he is the Children's Medical Services Staff Services Analyst and is responsible for the program's budget. He's a cornerstone for the programs and appreciated by his coworkers and staff.[1604.04][1604.04](applause) Next, we have Laurel Hernandez, an Administrative Specialist, 15 years of service, who's described[1618.93][1618.93](applause) as her own peanut gallery.[1623.32][1623.32](laughter) Laurel is described as an exemplary county employee, dedicated, conscientious, and driven to deliver excellent services to the customers of Child Welfare Service. Her supervisor, Juliet Webb, says, "I am honored and privileged to have Laurel on my team. She is my right-hand woman." Carolyn Lot, Account Clerk, Senior Account Clerk, 15 years, is a dedicated county employee who has worked hard to accomplish her goals. She has also consistently shown a willingness to help anyone else in need of assistance. Maria Morales, Office Assistant Three with 15 years in HHSA, is the go-to person at the Visalia Health Center. Her knowledge of the clinic's workings has been invaluable. She is always kind and considerate and makes time to help whenever and wherever. It is a pleasure to acknowledge her dedication and commitment to the Tulare County Health Janice Peterson, 15 years, Office Assistant Three. Janice takes care of the clerical needs of the environmental health's integrated waste and land use programs, almost unpronounceable.[1720.73][1720.73](laughter) Janice is easily one of the kindest, most polite, and considerate people you could ever have the pleasure of working with. What nice thoughts. Next, we have Anhaleita Casares Sinas, Social Services Worker Three in CWS with 15 years of service. Anhaleita was hired as an eligibility worker in the Lindsay Office and has held other positions in the Tulare and Visalia Offices as Lead Worker, Eligibility Specialist, Social Worker Two, Investigator for Child Welfare Services, and Social Worker Three. In 2007, Anhaleita went back to school and acquired her MS and is currently a social worker in the continuing unit with CWS. Next, we have Wendy Schilling in Child Support Services, a Senior Account Clerk with 15 years of service. Wendy came to work for Tulare County in August of 1994 as an Account Clerk for the Wendy came to work for Tulare County in August of 1994 as an account clerk for the municipal courts. In 1997, she moved to the District Attorney Family Support Division and is currently a Senior Account Clerk with Child Support Services. Next, we have Hiley Wallace, Chief Deputy Treasure Tax Collector, part of the Auditor Treasure Tax Collector, clerk recorder, and who knows what else office? With 15 years of service, Hiley received her BS in Finance from Cal State University Long Beach in 1986. In 94, as an accountant II, she promoted, hired in 94 as an accountant II. She was promoted through the ranks to become the Deputy Treasure Tax Collector in 2007. Hiley's been nominated for the Auditor Controller's In-House Shining Star Award by her peers. She was the auditor's candidate once for the Employee of the Year. She has enjoyed working with people in the auditor's office so much so that she married Next, we have Scott Williams, Staff Services Analyst III in HHSA, also with 15 years of service. He was hired as an accountant II by the Health Department when he first came to the county and has since been promoted to several analyst positions within the Mental Health and Fiscal Administration Departments. Scott's versatility has made him an asset to the Health and Services, Health and Human Services Agency for over 15 years. Next is Tang Zhang, Self-Sufficiency Counselor III, also with 15 years of service. Tang is a responsible and dedicated employee. He puts out extra effort to make sure all his clients' needs are met. He has displayed a great sense of humor and has developed strong relationships with his coworkers who both appreciate and respect him. We now come to the first 20-year recipient in Supervisor Cox's district, that would be Susan Cowley, Public Health Nurse II. Susan has demonstrated genuine compassion and commitment, working with the most complex tuberculosis patients and the most medically vulnerable infants, along with their families, and she continues to share her knowledge, education, and guidance to first-time moms in the Nurse Family Partnership Program of Tulare County. Ursula Morales, also 20 years, is a victim witness, Claim Specialist II. Ursula was raised and educated in Germany. She is responsible for seeing that victims of violent crimes receive financial assistance from the state. Ursula is involved in church, local German club, and she loves football. And in May, she's going off to her niece's wedding in Germany, so enjoy the trip. Next, also with 20 years of service, Social Services Worker III in CWS, Kermit Wulshager. Kermit has been employed with Tulare County since November of 1989. He began as a Social Worker III with the Dinuba Emergency Response. Kermit obtained his MSW in 1992 and in 94 transferred to the Adoption Unit, where he continues to remain dedicated to serving the children and families of Tulare County. We now begin with our 25-years-of-service employees. Chief Clinical Lab Technologist, Janice Bilbrey. Janice has been a dedicated county employee and has worked as an Office Assistant, Deputy Clerk, Mental Health Case Manager, and Deputy Public Guardian. She has great compassion for her clients and consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic, an essential component for the success of the organization. Assistant Health and Human Services Agency Director, Raymond Bullock, 25 years of service. Ray was originally from Minnesota. He was hired by the county in 1984. Ray has dedicated his years of service to providing better healthcare services to the needy in Tulare County and beyond. The county, HHSA, and the local community are thankful to have someone with his talents representing county health functions. He's most appreciated for his all-too-seldom pancake breakfast events he puts on for the staff. It's a little hint, Ray. Alicia Garcia, Training Officer II, 25 years. Alicia's supervisor, Lawrence Navarro, said, although often teased as being old-school, "Alicia more often schools those who tease her." Alicia's dedication to the job and staff make her an example worthy of imitation. What a nice compliment. Mary Perez, Supervising Office Assistant, 25 years in Health and Human Services. She came to the county in September of 1979. Since then, she has had the opportunity to work for probation, assessor, county personnel, and county mental health, and for the last 20 years, she's worked at the Visalia Adult Clinic. Since 1997, she supervises the clinic's support staff and most recently provides direct support to the county mental health director. Now for the last recipient from District Three, a retired employee, Chief Clinical Lab Technologist, Baron Nida. It has been written about Baron that it's impossible to do any justice to Baron in a couple of lines. Thirty-something years as a clinical scientist in the clinical laboratory, 20-something years as the chief technologist, Baron maintained the highest standards for the clinical laboratory. Baron is an exceptional scientist, an example to other employees, and a friend and a gentleman with his peers. Next, District Four Supervisor Chairman Steve Worthley will begin with the 15-year presentations. Our first recipient is Magdalena Castilleja Gomez. And whoever wrote this, thank you for starting out that Maggie, it's easier. Maggie is concerned and professional when interacting with others. She's a responsible employee and is committed to providing excellent customer service to those she serves. Maggie greets everyone happily. She assists with a smile. She's earned the respect of her peers and office staff. A Staff Services Analyst II in the Health and Human Service Agency with 15 years, Paul He has worked all 15 years in environmental health. He worked as an environmental health aide in the surveillance, water, and household hazardous waste programs and is currently a Staff Services Analyst II in the Water Program, maintaining the water system database, issuing permits for water wells, and is the Division's Christine Espino, Office Assistant Supervisor, Health and Human Services, 15 years, is hard-working. Is described as hard-working and dedicated employee, gives 100% to everything that she does. As a Supervising Office Assistant, she does an excellent job overseeing 19 office assistants at six different office locations. Her supervisor Laurel Hernandez says, "Thank you, Christine, for all your hard work." Rachel Nario-Guerra, Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant II, has been with the county since May of 1994. She began as an eligibility worker and remained in eligibility till 2001, when she transferred over to clerical and currently is a Self-Sufficiency Support Assistant. She's given 15 years of wonderfully dedicated service to the county. Yolanda Trevino, a Self-Sufficiency Resource Specialist, is a dedicated employee who takes pride in her job. She is one to take the initiative to assist her peers and will research a problem and find a resolution and benefit the person or the situation involved. She takes the opportunity when she does so to enhance her own knowledge and make her better in her work that she performs for herself and peers. Next, our first 20-year recipient from District Four, Crusita Gutierrez. Crusita started her career as a Child Protective Services Assistant. She's risen through the ranks to her current position as the Dinuba Tulare Works Office Program Specialist. Crusita's knowledge of the various Tulare Works Program regulations makes her a natural mentee. Her proudest accomplishments are her three children, Marlena, Maritza, and Alonso, but most of all, her grandson Ezekiel and her three-year-old granddaughter Ava. Next, also with 20 years of service, Maria Josepian. Maria is a dedicated, caring employee that gives 100% plus at every task assigned to her. She goes above and beyond her job responsibilities to make sure the residents of Tulare County are given the information and services they need and deserve. Also with 20 years of service, Environmental Health Specialist, Keith Yonkey. Keith started working with environmental health in May of 1989. Positions he has held have been registered, Environmental Health Specialist II and III. He has worked in food, hazardous materials, do those go together? Medical waste, solid waste, and underground storage tank programs. Self-Sufficiency Counselor III Sylvia Munoz began with the county in 1989 as an Office Assistant and promoted through the ranks to a Self-Sufficiency Counselor. She's very knowledgeable and has worked with CalWorks, Food Stamps, Medi-Cal, and the Welfare to Work Program. Sylvia is a pleasant person to work with, she works well with others, and is a team player, always willing to help where needed without hesitation. Lawrence Navarro, HHS Unit Manager One in CalWorks with 20 years of service. He currently manages... Lawrence currently manages the Tulare Works Training Team as well as the Policy Program Specialists. His commitment in providing Tulare Works staff with training and policy information reflects excellence in meeting program requirements to the administration of the programs. Program Specialist II in CalWorks, Leanne Zuniga, with 20 years. Started her career as an account clerk in the Dinuba Tulare Works Office and promoted through various ranks to become a Tulare Works Benefit Audit Teams Program Specialist. Leanne is gifted in learning and retaining the job knowledge she has acquired throughout her years with Tulare County. She is an asset, and her supervisor describes her as someone who we truly appreciate for her contributions to our agency. Next, we have Client Advocate, Alisa Rivas, with 25 years, quarter of a century of service. Alisa started back in 1984, I have more than a quarter of a century too. Alisa started with the county in 1984 as an intermediate clerk in the Department of Social Services. She then became an Eligibility Worker I, promoting through the ranks to three levels. She held various positions in the Job Training Office, Job Training Assessment Technician, Administrative Aid, Employment and Training Specialist, and is currently a Client Advocate for the Health and Human Services Agency. Apparently not here, okay. Our final individual to be recognized in District Four is 30-year employee, Office Assistant II Rebecca Cortez. Throughout her 31 years with Tulare County, Becky has served senior clients in one capacity or another, from transporting seniors and delivering meals to answering the aging 1-800 line and assisting seniors in finding assistance. Becky has a passion for serving seniors and approaches each one as she would her own grandparents, with respect, concern, and dedication. Her passion for seniors can be seen by her volunteering with committees and events that recognize seniors and her continual efforts to find community services and resources that will benefit and honor seniors. All right, at this time, I'm going to have Supervisor Mike Guinness, District Five, to come forward with the presentations for the employees work in his district. In our 15-year category, Self-Sufficiency Counselor Francis Guerrero. Francis has continually provided the public superb knowledge of program regulations, policies, and procedures for the various public assistance programs. She's provided these services with great professionalism and understanding of our clients' needs. Thank you, Francis. Self-Sufficiency Counselor Linda Hazelwood, with 15 years, obviously with Health and Human Services Agency. She's worked in the Lindsay District Office for her entire career. She has an excellent work ethic and embraces the team concept, which is appreciated by coworkers and supervisors. She always maintains a respectful and professional demeanor with clients and coworkers alike. I'm not sure of the correct pronunciation of this name. Juah continuously demonstrates a high level of competency that exceeds the normal expectations of job proficiency. Juah's greatest contribution is her willingness to work with everyone. She is professional, a strong asset, and a great reflection upon the agency. Also with 15 years of service, Program Specialist II in CalWorks, Teresa Houston. She joined the division and has risen to the level of Employment Services Program Specialist, is well-versed in the Employment Service Program, passionate about her job, constantly looking for innovative ways to improve the quality of service provided to the clients. looking for innovative ways to improve the quality of service provided to the clients. Her recent success was implementing the Fast Track Program that provides subsidized employment to our clients. The program has been greatly successful and a lot of it is attributed to Tessa's efforts. Self-Sufficiency Supervisor Lula McClung with 15 years of service has administered and provided a superb knowledge of public assistance programs in the Tulare Works Division. She provides timely services to our clients. She is professional, compassionate, and understanding on behalf of the clients that the agency serves. We are now coming to a 25-year recipient, HHS Unit Manager One, CalWorks Sylvia Ness... I've only got one more after this, give me a break. Ness is...I can't do it. I rehearsed it. Would you please?
Nassian Sino.
Nassian Sino.
There we go.
Thank you Nassian Sino. Sylvia has worked for Tulare Works since July of 1984. She manages the Porterville District Office. She is always looking to the future on possibilities to improve customer service. She focuses on her responsibilities that definitely reflect through her constant improvement in office operations. And you're also obviously gracious and forgiving and I appreciate that. Finally, our last recipient today, Ernestina Becerra, 30 years of service as a Self-Sufficiency Ernestina has been a supervisor with Tulare Works for over seven years. She supervises a union that evaluates eligibility for county-funded programs such as general assistance and the Tulare County Medical Services TCMS programs. Ernestina also supervises the outstation workers located at the clinics and hospitals in the Porterville and Lindsay areas.
Thank you all for being here today and before we take a break, I would like to give each of the members an opportunity to address you and I'll start to my left with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Well, I think Steve wanted me to speak first because he wanted me to say it before anyone else did on the board. I want to congratulate all the employees from all of the districts for their many years of service to the county. We are so fortunate to have employees that are so dedicated to serving Tulare County. I know just in my district alone, I had several employees that had served Tulare County longer than I've even been alive. And for that, I'm very appreciative and for throughout the county, we have many employees who have done that and we are so grateful for your years of service and your loyalty to Tulare County and we wish you best of luck in all of your endeavors. For those of you who are retiring and for those of you who are staying around and continuing to grace us with your wisdom and expertise, we thank you and we look forward to congratulating you on many more years of service. So, thank you.
They know I always add up the years, 1,270 years of service here for those that were honored today. I'm probably going to offend someone, but to all, that's kind of my nature. But to all the wonderful women here today, it looks like, shame on the county, it looks like we employed you right out of the sixth grade. Work just is wonderful. It's great to see everyone's bright, happy face. The man looks like you started second, third year of college. But you know, we do appreciate all that you do because you are the faces that people see. It's not my face. Every once in a while, we get to talk to someone on the phone, they just don't knock on our door like they knock on your door and for that, we appreciate you very much. All the hard work you do and your dedication, thank you.
I want to thank you for your years of service and the expertise that you've gained over these years. We certainly believe that you are the backbone of all the services that we provide as a county and we are very grateful that you do it in a very professional, in a very professional way. I really want to say that I hope you stay around as long as you can because as you know, we're going through a very difficult time financially and we really need your expertise and your wisdom to help us through this period of time. Most of you have been through this before. If you've had 15 years of service, you know that this downturns and upturns are kind of cyclical and you've seen it before and I hope you help mentor those who have not. So, thank you very much.
I'd just also like to echo all the sentiments of all my board members here, but thank you very much, each and every one of you, for what you do on a daily basis because you are Tulare County, you represent us every day, you're the faces and the people that come in contact with our constituents out there and you're doing an excellent job. So, thank you so much for what you do every day for Tulare County and we look forward to having you for many more, many, many years to come. Thank you.
And our HR Director Tim wanted to make a final comment.
Yes, I would. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to acknowledge for a moment Judy Wine's role in managing the Service Awards Program. The management of this program is Judy's responsibility, but it's also her passion. She has to validate eligibility, she has to contact the recipients, advising them of their choices and options, she has to order the gifts, she organizes and prepares the gifts for presentation. At least with the Oscars, everybody got the same thing. Then she has to follow up with those employees who have not responded or have changed their award selection or have changed their mind, have decided not to come or then have decided to come at the last minute. Then she has to gently prod the departments to give the little narratives that I've been able to read to you today and then she has to prepare the script. Now, consider the fact that in fact, there are 432 employees eligible this year for recognition awards. That is including people from 10 through 40 years of service. So, in addition to the 130 recipients that will be seen, either the 67 today and the approximately 65 next week, there are another 300 who also are receiving awards that Judy has had to organize. This is a major undertaking on behalf of our department and the county employees and I wanted to take this one chance, this time, to thank and acknowledge Judy's terrific job that she's done to make this work so well.
Well, I get to say the first word and the final word and I just want to say to all of you again, thank you so much. We have been and are continuing to go through some troubled times financially and your attitude, your work ethic, your mentorship to your younger co-employees is so very important now, more than any other time. And I tell you this because we also appreciate you more now than any other time because we know these are difficult times and what we will pull together, I am very confident in this county's abilities because of the work efforts that you all make, that we will get through this time and we will see brighter days ahead financially and we will continue to move forward even during these difficult times of moving the county forward, improving our efficiencies, providing the valid and vital services that our people in Tulare County need. And I personally would like to thank you, I've been doing this now for 12 years and I have to say, I have been so impressed with the change over that 12-year period. I know you've all been here those 12-year periods, but there was a time when we used to give these awards and many times, people did not bother to come, they were not really very anxious to seem to come forward. You all come forward with a skip in your step and you're dressed very well and you look so good and you look so professional and that, I believe, is the tenor of this county. We have moved forward, we are a professional organization and you are what have made it professional. And I personally want to thank you for your efforts and continued efforts as we move Tulare County forward. Thank you very much and we'll take a brief recess so you may be able to get back to your work. Okay, get back on track here and we have, our first item will be public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board this morning on matters which are within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda are encouraged to come forward at this time and give us your name and address. Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public comment period and go on to Board of Supervisor Matters and beginning to my right, Mr. Ennis.
Yes, thank you. It's been a bill, AB 2198, that's been put up to possibly get our Indian Gaming Local Benefit money back. It's a $30 million bill, so we'll be following that very closely because these Indian reservations, especially here in Tulare County, do impact this and the need for that special money is very, very needed by the communities that are very close to the Indian reservation. So, we'll be watching that bill as it moves forward. That's all I have today.
Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to announce that we are having, celebrating Orange Blossom Festival Week in Lindsay and will accommodate in a parade on Saturday at 10 o'clock. So, I invite anyone and everyone to attend.
All I really have is, by way of report, would be a year ago, the Sheriff's Explorer Program here in Visalia had three young people in it and there's been a concerned effort to get out and bring more young people into that Explorer Program which is youth 14 to 19 or so and we've all seen them at events directing traffic. This program here, the Visalia area, has exploded to nearly 50 young people, both young boys and girls and a lot of those folks come from your district. Your districts are coming into Visalia to a central location to participate in the program and they have a need for equipment, uniforms, and so forth. So, I'll be asking each of the supervisors that has youth in the program here to help support that program, help those young people get the uniforms and the training equipment they need. But a great to go from three to nearly 50 in one year and it just shows and we've, as we've been doing the step-up event, shows that young people want to belong to something. They want to be a part of something and this is a good something to be a part of and I'd like to hopefully get the board to help support these young people and those efforts. Very, very good officer that we have, working Deputy Garza, very exhilarating young man who has military experience and he's passing that right on to these young people who will be our next generation of sheriffs, police officers, and military.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
This weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Help My Kids Incorporated Walk-a-Thon for Autism that was held in Exeter. This was the first of an annual event that they're going to be having to increase awareness and raise money to benefit autism and encourage early prevention and intervention in order to help stem the effects caused by autism. And I think that the awareness was really helped by this event, they had a great turnout and the community of Exeter really stepped up to support it and Alan Supervisor Sheedah was there with me and it was a great event and I was very proud to help participate and to promote that event.
Of pictures?
I'm not sure. I use it on camera with me, so I'm not, I didn't take any pictures, but I'm sure there, I can contact Judy and get you some pictures if you'd like. Now, there are some pictures for the second event that I did attend and that was a Spikes and Sparkles fundraiser in Tipton and that is a high heel race which I did not participate in due to previous injuries that I've had in my life that could have put me in a much worse situation, but that event was very successful. In the community of Tipton, they were able to raise over $20,000 to give to the Women and Children Shelter at the Visalia Rescue Mission. So, very successful event, there were several hundred people there, great turnout and it was all done in memory of A.J. Vanderham who was a constituent in my district who passed away from cancer earlier this year. So, great event, very positive. And the last thing that I'll talk about is, again, I will encourage folks to attend this week's Tulare Gang Awareness Forum. The event is on Thursday evening from 5:30 till 8:00. We are going to provide dinner, we're going to have local law enforcement officials, local organizations providing resources that can help deal with this gang problem that we all face here in Tulare County, all present. Very excited about the event and we look forward to seeing everyone there. This event will be this Thursday and there's also going to be another forum which is next Thursday, same time, same details, but this one, this week is at Mulcahy Middle School and the event next week is at Mission Oak High School. So, thank you very much and look forward to seeing everyone there.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Last week in District Four, we had a change of scenery where when we started a step-up program up there, we had made available to the community our portable building from the sheriff's office for a step-up after-school program which was so successful, they outgrew our facility and the local high school was able to provide facilities of about two to three times the amount of space that we had and make it available to the after-school program and so they had their grand opening this last week and it, I was a little disappointed to hear they'd left our facility until I found out the reason why is because it's been such a successful program, so that was a good event. Also on Saturday, Dinuba had its annual relay for life. Dinuba has been, has just excelled in this regard in terms of raising funds for the American Cancer Society. This year, it was a little more difficult year, a few smaller teams, a lesser number of teams, but they did raise at this point over $84,000 which for a community the size of Dinuba is just remarkable. Last year, I think it was like $120,000 and so that was a great event. Kristen was there participating and the Heinzle family was very active there too, so it was a great event. Finally, also on Saturday night, there was a Catholic mass to celebrate 100th anniversary in Cutler and it was my privilege to be there for that event and so things are, good things are happening around the county even in spite of our difficult times and it's always good to report those things back, I think. At this time, we will take up our consent calendar items and Items Six and Eleven are pulled. Number 20 will be taken up separately. And Council, do we have any additional language on 25?
Actually, it turns out we do not need it.
All right, so then the balance of the consent calendar can be taken, we can take action on it this time unless there's anything other board members wish to take.
I would move approval that we approve the consent calendar, removing Item Six and Eleven, and then we will consider Item Number 20 separately.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Vanderpoel, seconded by Mr. Ennis, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous in support and they will take up Item 20 at this time. Mr. Fussell, I believe, is going to address this on this matter. Morning Britt.
Good morning Board, Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. We ask that this item be pulled this morning so we can provide a little bit additional information relative to the item. Michelle, if I could have a PowerPoint, please? Have a brief PowerPoint presentation. The project before you today is the Betty Drive Avenue 312 Realignment and Improvement Project and what we're asking the board to do, and there is a revised resolution before you this morning, to consider and approve the February 19, 2010 Addendum to the Subsequent Negative Declaration regarding the project and authorize the Tulare County Redevelopment Agency to file a notice of determination. Secondly, we're requesting that the Board of Directors of the Redevelopment Agency ratify and approve the Betty Drive Avenue 312 Realignment and Improvement Project Phase Two, which is defined as phases Two A and Two B, this action retroactive to November 10th of last year. Then finally, find that the Board of Directors had the authority to approve the project as of November 10th of last year and then it was in Tulare County Redevelopment Agency's best interest to approve the project on that date. Quickly about the project, it is, the component that we're talking about this morning is the area where there's the grade separation over the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. The original project included both a underpass alternative and, and we won it, I'll talk about the overpass alternative, but in both of these situations, Camp Drive was to have a grade separated crossing with the realigned Betty Drive so that you could continue up Camp Drive to Road 68 and then back to access Betty Drive because the connection that's occurring right here would be because the connection that's occurring right here would be eliminated due to the grade separation project. A similar feature is involved in the overhead project as well. In this particular case, Betty Drive would go over Camp Drive. Couple of things to pay attention in these two graphics is the limits of the, of the grade separation starting just west of this spur track alignment and then landing east over here from Camp Drive. The project that we're asking for you to approve this morning is a change from the original presentation of the project. After working with the railroad, the, the grade separation needed to be slid to the west in order to accommodate additional space for the spur track in this area, as well as for growth and expansion of the railroad in this particular area. And also, the grade separation was shortened in order to reduce costs for the project. As a result, it is no longer making the grade separated crossing with Camp Drive to Road 68. To replace that connection, Avenue 310 will be reconstructed, reconstructed and widened over to the Robinson Road Alignment. And then a new road, Robinson Road, would be constructed up to Betty Drive. And then this segment was shown in the previous plans, again, connecting back to Road 68 so that the Camp Drive connection now follows this route through the area. The eastern end of the project remains the same. In fact, a substantial portion of this project was built with the first phase. And the second phase of the project will construct the median in this area up to this location. And then the lanes on the south side giving a four-lane divided roadway. When the project was first constructed, it was built with a median and a divided roadway. This is Road 72 or 78 over to the intersection with Road 80 or Plaza Drive. When the project was first done, a subsequent negative declaration was prepared. And this was tiered off of the Goshen Rich Grove Redevelopment Project EIR, the Goshen Community Services District Annexation Project EIR, the Visalia Circulation Element EIR, and the Visalia Sanitary Sewer Master Plant EIR. The overcrossing solution was identified in late 2009 after working extensively with the railroad as to, you know, what, what crossing best served everybody's interest. And as I indicated, the structure was shortened, eliminating the ability to provide a grade separated crossing of Camp Drive. And that's the reason for the 310 Robinson Connection. And as a result of that, an addendum to the subsequent negative declaration was approved by the Environmental Assessment Officer on February 19, 2009. So again, what we're asking for the board to do this morning is to ratify and approve the project back to when that grade separation overcrossing component was approved and to approve the addendum to the negative declaration. And with that, I'd respond to any questions that the board may have.
Any questions from members? Yes, Mr. Cox.
By accommodating the railroad and bumping those landing points, look like east and west, will we affect any more property owners than the original?
Not really, no. There's not, not a significant change on both, both ends. There's, the same property owners are affected with either version of the project.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
I just want to say, Britt, I very much appreciate, I know your staff has been working diligently on this project in a very short timeframe. And happy to see we're moving forward quickly as we can.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
That will take us then to our timed item. We have a public hearing. And this was scheduled at 9:30. We're a little bit beyond that, but plain and temporary, we just needed to get here, it needed to be here. And this is a request from the Resource Management Agency to certify negative declaration, prepare for General Plan Amendment Number GPA 09-004. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, and we're leaving. Board members. I'd like to present this item, GPA 09004, and 001, questioning general plan amendments for the Strathmore City Plan and a brief PowerPoint presentation. John Heiser, sorry, RMA Planning.
Thank you, John.
Shortcut. Why is it not working? Okay. The request, it's been, is to amend the Strathmore Community Plan, re-designating the multifamily residential to service commercial on 2.54 acres. Request is change the zoning from R3 multifamily residential site plan review to a service commercial C-3 site plan review.
John, can you move a little closer to the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. The project is on two parcel numbers. It will require a tentative map modification, boundary line adjustment, which is in-house right now for processing. And the overall attempt is to propose a mini storage facility, too.
Help is on the way.
Sorry. Site is in Strathmore, as you can see. And their site is outlined just, just south of the Mobile Home Park and east of the school facilities in Strathmore. Here again, it's basically right in this area, is a proposed mini storage. This is also part of a subdivision for 46 units they'll be modifying. This is the general plan land use. This is the existing zoning, which shows the R3 surrounded by AE20, some commercial on the east side of Orange Belt Drive, full district. This is the requested amendments for today's consideration to modify the R3 district to this C3 site plan review. This is currently the site, it's flat, as you can see, looking towards the east. This is the remaining facility or any buildings out on the property, east from Row 228. The property, again, looking north along Avenue 194 towards the Sierra Mountain Range. Looking at the property where the phased storage facility would be located. This is looking north along the railroad right away, where there would be a retaining wall or some kind of walled area here. And then of course, you're going to have your ingress, egress location somewhere in here. To the north, you have the Mobile Home Park and existing community of Strathmore. Again, this is looking west. In the background is the new school facility. This is the proposed subdivision map. Modification would be taking these two parcels, this map has not been recorded yet, doing a boundary line adjustment to readjust the parcel for the C, this mini storage. These two lots here would be utilized for temporary storage of stormwater retention ponds. Until such time, future development requires the residential units to be connected to the Strathmore Public Utility Districts for water and wastewater services. Again, this is just showing the shaded area where the proposed facility would be located. This is a conceptual diagram of the mini storage unit. Would be the office and above residential unit for the office. The applicant has submitted preliminary site plans for seminal today at our RMA office. Very serious about this project. The facts are, this is a tentative map, 773, 46 single-family residential subdivision, modifying, they're removing seven lots. The water and wastewater connections will be required at the time of residential development to the Public Utilities District of Strathmore. It will be using temporary stormwater retention ponds. It's in a flood zone. However, the conditions of approval require that the living space be above the high watermark, which this will be. Standard conditions of approvals have been added. They're subject to Caltransfership required for identified intersection improvements. The project will require final site plan approval through the county, required for phased mini storage facility. The boundary line adjustment, again, is currently being processed. And as conditioned, the project complies with general plan and zoning policies and ordinances. Again, upon approval, the requested land use amendments. Planning staff recommends the board certify the negative declaration prepared for the project. Find that there's no substantial evidence that the general plan amendment, A 09004, will have significant effects on the environment and determine that the neg deck prepared for said general plan amendment reflects the independent judgment of the county. The board is also, the staff recommends to the board amend the Strathmore Community Plan as requested in GPA 09004 from high-density residential to service commercial site plan review and adopt the findings for approval for general plan amendment as set forth Planning Commission Resolution Number 8469. That's your first, the staff's recommendation. And we also have the same criteria recommendations for the zoning ordinance amendment. We have options to accept a negative declaration as appropriate environmental document. Move forward to recommend the board supervisors approve the general plan amendment and zone change. Option two, move to approve subject to modifications through additions or deletions of conditions as discussed. Option three, move to deny. Option four, refer back to staff or further study and report. Thank you. Any questions?
Are there any questions, staff?
Quick one. Does the UDB lines that run down 194, because I didn't see an urban development bound, it says it's in a UDB, I didn't see the UDB.
Yes. I didn't have it on one of the graphics, but it is within the urban development boundary.
I mean, where, is it in the middle of it or is it on the edge? It's 228 and 194. Is that the edge of the UDB?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Cox, Ben Kimball, Tulare County Planning.
Mr. Kimball.
I'm not sure exactly if it's on, on that street, but it is near the edge. It's on the southern edge of Strathmore. So it couldn't possibly be considered in the middle.
It would make sense, given the zoning around there, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board this matter? Invite to come forward this time. Give us your name and address. Our stampede insurance is all paid up, but we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chairman, I'm familiar with this property. And it was a period of time, maybe a year or two years ago, they, a developer wanted to build apartment buildings that comply, that comply with the current zoning. What happened was, the Public Utility District did not have the water entitlement to provide for those units. Property has been probably zoned two or three times in the last four years to different uses. But until the last problem came up about the availability of water from the Public Utility District, it was the intent of the owner to go ahead and build those apartment buildings, but it is not feasible at this time. So I will move approval of this item.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Oshida, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Any further discussion? Not, please cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. Thank you. That will take us now to our untimed items. First item is number 29. Request from the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance. I'm not going to go through all the numbers. Good morning, Ms. Wallace, and welcome, and thank you, and congratulations on your receiving your award this morning.
Thank you. My name's Heidi Wallace. I'm here today to present the agenda to change the TOT ordinance. Unfortunately, I didn't set up any kind of program, but I did send out a red line item, a red line copy to everyone, as well as the clerk of the board. So unless you have some questions, I've been aware that I...
Are there any questions?
If I may, I know we delayed this a week or two because of some pending litigation, and we're fine with that.
Yes, we made some small changes to the wording to include any online reservation people as well. And, and then we added something in the back that if the litigation doesn't go well, we can just delete that out.
In other words, you have several clauses where if, instead of the whole ordinance being declared invalidated because of a particular problem, you're able to excise out those portions which that might apply.
Correct.
And the balance of the ordinance would still be effective.
Correct.
And there was, Mr. Chairman, if I may, there was an appellate case that came down against the city of Anaheim. But that was a procedural matter, really. The city required that the taxpayer pay the tax and then file an action for refund. And the court held that that was not supportable under the law allowing TOT taxes. Our ordinance does not have that same requirement. So we're, we're good there.
We had extensive discussion about this earlier and review and, and analysis and report by our staff. So this is just really to deal with those minor issues for today. So are there any other questions from board members? If not, we entertain a motion.
To approve.
I'll second that motion. A motion by Mr. Ennis, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. No further discussion. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. To approve. And the grand jury will be know that we responded very quickly to their concerns. Thank you. That will bring us to item number 30, a request from the Human Resources Development to approve participation in the state of California's State Disability Insurance Coverage for Unit 20. Morning, Eric.
Morning, Board and Chairman. Eric Martin, Human Resources and Development Employee Relations Specialist. The item before your board is the matter of the state disability insurance coverage for Unit 20 employees. The item first came before your board on March 23. At that meeting, a concern was raised over the timeliness of a communication that included the employee cost for SDI coverage, which was sent a few weeks prior to the vote. Therefore, in order to consider abundance of caution on this matter, a revote was scheduled. Employees were notified on March 28 via email that a new vote would take place. And the election notice included the cost for SDI coverage, which is 1.1% of salary, up to a maximum of $1,026 annually. And an example that showed an employee earning $80,000 would pay approximately $880 per year for coverage. The voting period was March 29 through April 9. The outcome of the vote was 22 votes yes and 18 votes no. And 57 of the 58 employees opened the email notice of the election. Coverage would be effective April 1 with payroll deductions commencing with pay period 8 or March 28. Our department's recommendation is that the board approve participation in the state's SDI coverage for Unit 20 employees based upon the vote of the employees. And I'm here for any questions that the board may have on this matter.
This is a purely voluntary basis? People can choose to participate or not to participate?
No, it's by unit. So the employees in the unit would all be covered and have to participate.
I just want to make a comment. I just want to say, I appreciate your efforts in HR to go out for a revote. Made sure that this email and this vote was seen. 57 of the 58 employees who were going to be affected, they saw the email at least. And, and the vote still turned out the same way it did when you first brought it to present to us several weeks ago. And I'm glad to see that we at least erred on the side of precaution just to make sure that we're safe in doing this and moving forward with all employees knowing how this is going to affect their bottom line. So thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
That's correct. Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
If I can, was it the same outcome as the last time? Because I remember it was just a few.
That's correct. It's the same outcome. The votes, 18 yes last time and 12 no. So we did have a little more participation this round.
The only comment I have, I've been paying this SDI for many, many years. And I haven't seen one of my employees ever recover a dime from SDI. seen one of my employees ever recover a dime from SDI, but it's just usually covered on the workman's comp. So, I have yet to see the benefit of the whole program.
All right. With that positive note, are there any other questions?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. Please cast your vote.
It's a good thing when you don't have to use your catastrophic insurance.
Thank you, Board.
Vote was approved unanimously. Thank you, Eric, and that brings us to our final item before we go into closed session, item thirty-one, and that's a request from the County Administrative Office to approve the revised Tulare County Association of Governments Joint Powers Agreement among the cities of the county and the county of Tulare.
Hi, Jim Russo, County Administrative Officer. Thank you, Chair. This item was prepared in order to update the, the existing, the ongoing changes to TCAG that we've seen the last couple of years. Specifically, the, the change in the JPA will allow the TCAG to provide staff services and facilities as we would like them to, to provide to the local agency formation commission, otherwise known as LAFCO. It'll, it'll also allow TCAG to acquire, maintain, and dispose of real or personal property if they so choose, the group chooses. And last but not least, it would allow TCAG to operate Vanderpool Services. This is brought to your board for, for consideration and approval.
Are there any questions by board members?
One, one quick question. Can we break out the revisions and vote on them separately, or does this all have to be done in one vote? You have three recommendations, A, B, and C. Can we vote on the A, B, and C separately, or do we have to do it all together?
I think it appears we put them all together.
Yeah, thank you. Entertain a motion, no further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Ennis.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shida. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. Votes are four to one for approval, absent Cox voting no. And that concludes our general session today. Council, we have reason for closed session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Item A is off agenda. You have Items B through G on your board's closed session. Agenda is both your regular agenda and addendum. I do not anticipate any announcements out.
Good. Thank you all for being here today, and the board will go into closed session this time. One quick reminder.